Evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting for the Daily City Library Board of Trustees for November seventeenth, twenty twenty. Before we start our meeting, I would like to read the COVID nineteen announcement for public meetings pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order and twenty-five twenty. Members of the Daily City Library Board and staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via livestream at, um, via livestream and to submit comments through the livestream website and/or submit public comments via email prior to the public meeting. I am sorry, I have, I have to, somebody like ringing my doorbell like a lot of times. So just really quickly, sorry about that.
The unique nature of Zoom meetings.
Hi, Lori, good to see you.
Hi, everyone. How are y'all doing?
Hanging there, enjoying the rain and cold.
Yeah, it's like sweater weather.
Right, and pajamas. Angela's probably receiving a lot of presents for all of us on Zoom today from Amazon.
Hopefully, everything's okay.
I am back, sorry about that. Um, let's see where I left off. Um, to submit a comment in writing, please email thelibraryboard@dailycity.org and write public comment in the subject line. And the body of the email include the item number and/or title of the item as well as your comments. All comments received by four P M. will be emailed to the library board members and included as an add to packet on the city's website prior to the meeting. Those comments received after four P M. will be added to the record and shared with the library board members for the meeting. Persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in this meeting should call the office of the city clerk at nine-nine-one-eight-zero-seven-eight as soon as possible. So I call this meeting to order. Let's go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the
To the flag of the United States of America and to the perfect, for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Okay. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, President Logarta.
President.
Vice President Faupoua.
Here.
Uh, and trustee Das.
Present.
Um, trustee Santos could not be with us this evening.
Okay, thank you. I hope everyone's had an opportunity to review tonight's agenda. If there are no updates, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, and for the minutes for October twenty twenty twenty, is there a motion to move?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, may we have the director's report?
Sure, um, so at the last meeting, um, there was a request for an update on, um, our plans for going into the next stage of, of returning to open building service. So I have, uh, let's see, I have a PowerPoint here that I can share with you. It's really just, um, like a two-page document that's been spread out to be more, uh, user-friendly in a PowerPoint. So can everyone see it?
Yes.
Yes.
Excellent, so what, when this document was started, we had in our minds a very soft target of maybe mid-January. We definitely won't be opening before January and looking at the conditions that are happening right now. It seems like it'll be much later, right? Um, so it'll be a modified service model, um, and this is solely for safety reasons. The plan is contingent on having low levels of, of infection. So, you know, the tier that the county is in will be a factor. Um, the, the status of other city facilities will be something that will also be considered as well as neighboring libraries. And then finally, when a, um, a date is finalized, it's, it's subject to approval by the city manager naturally. Um, we have, um, both, um, in anticipation of reopening, but also just because, um, we are working in the buildings and we are providing, um, that curbside service at the doors. We have implemented a number of safety measures, um, to protect the public and the staff. So all staff have been trained on how to limit the spread of COVID nineteen, including how to screen themselves for symptoms and to stay home if they have any symptoms. Um, we have a abundance of caution, um, practice. And, um, as, uh, we'll talk a little bit about, um, the hourly staff, but as hourly staff are brought back in, everyone is, um, doing the self-guided training that one of our staff created. Um, staff are all wearing, um, face coverings when they're in the library and they're wiping, um, down all their workstations, both before and after use. Um, frequent hand washing, of course, and we have hand sanitizer sitting at every entrance and pretty much on every surface. Um, we're quarantining, um, as we talked about before, our returned library materials for ninety-six hours, um, before we check them in and put, either put them back on the shelves or check them out again, send them, um, into delivery. And we have, um, really just lovely, um, hygiene panels on all of our public service desks, public works, um, coordinated with a local company, their glass, they're, they're quite, um, quite nice, actually. Um, so hopefully they will, um, you know, allow us to have that protection without it, you know, looking like a, a half measure. And then, um, as I mentioned, we have hand sanitizing stations in place. Um, we are in, it's kind of an ongoing process of, um, putting, uh, signage and markers for physical distancing and, and all the other measures. Um, we have these signs, um, for our users of the curbside service right now. But we will, obviously, we'll need to have them, um, in the appropriate places around the inside of the facility once, um, the public is coming inside. Um, we're also finding places to temporarily remove, um, some of the furniture, the seating, the tables, um, computer workstations, unfortunately, so that we can have that, that physical distancing and also, um, you know, have, um, not have extraneous surfaces that have to be sanitized. Um, and then, um, small enclosed spaces, uh, we have, uh, two study rooms that are, were used by multiple people at a time that wanted to work in silence, um, at John Daly and at, um, at Westlake, and those, um, will be closed off just because of their, their small nature. And then, of course, the community room also. Um, we, when we are open, we're gonna have, um, regular sanitizing of high-touch surfaces. The library staff are gonna provide this, um, and we'll just have a, you know, a routine, a checklist that we go through. Um, public works will come in as they are doing right now and cleaning and disinfecting everything. They have, um, you know, a, a spray that they use, uh, to make that fast. Uh, the occupancy, um, will be set at a much, much reduced level to allow for physical distancing. Um, and the bathrooms, um, because they're, they're quite small, will be limited to one person or a parent and a child at a time. And then, um, this was, as a suggestion from, um, I think trustee Faupoua at the last meeting, a reminder that we should designate some of that time specifically to seniors and at-risk people so that, um, you know, so that they can come in without having to necessarily, um, join other people who might be, um, you know, taking fewer precautions in their lifestyle. The process, um, is gonna be, um, make by appointment, which is not, I realize, the ideal way to provide the best access for everyone, but, um, we wanna make sure that we're, um, we're making it equitably available because if we do go with something where people were queuing outside, waiting for someone, the next person to leave, to keep the capacity correct, um, people do use the library very differently than they, um, use like a, a grocery store. They come in, sometimes stay for, you know, six hours or more. So we, you know, we can't have people queuing with unknown when they might be able to get into the library. Um, we are also having to reduce the number of computer workstations. We've been taking out some of them. So we're gonna have to categorize, um, people's use of the computer by either computer use or browsing, mainly just because the computer uses is limited. And, um, most libraries, it's very much depending on the, the furniture and the arrangement, can accommodate about six computers, which is a lot fewer than they normally do. And we are looking into other places, but the computers need, you know, they need power and they need data. So there's only so many places we can put them. And then, um, the subject, of course, of people who, um, come in with a parent or caregiver. Oh, no, I think we lost one of our members, she's coming back in. Um, so we, we will be, you know, treating that as a, as one unit. Um, and then we will be, will be, by necessity, be limiting the amount of time that people are in to, to be able to provide access to others. Um, we do not have a proposed schedule at this time, but we will, and, um, it will include at least one weekend day. Um, and I know that that, um, was something that was expressed by the board as well, and morning and evening times to, uh, accommodate people's different types of schedules. And we intend to, um, continue to provide curbside or maybe even expand it. Because, you know, for a lot of people, they come in and they're picking up their requests, and there's no need for them to come in, um, and so it's, we would rather provide, um, all services in the, you know, least contact way possible. Um, and then, um, we'll be posting signs, of course, but we're asking people not to come in as a, as an employee, but also as a, as a patron, if they're experiencing any signs of, um, illness. Um, face coverings are required. Um, we will provide a mask, we have, you know, boxes of those disposable masks, um, that we can make available for people who need them. Um, and washing and sanitizing hands is going to be, um, something that we're encouraging and, and making as easy as possible, and then maintaining, um, six feet of distance from staff and other patrons and following, um, directions of staff if there's any issues. Um, we will be providing, um, I think, some critical services, um, the browsing and checkout. Um, one of the biggest bits of feedback we've received is people really miss browsing. So, um, as I mentioned, we're gonna continue with the curbside pickup. Um, we are providing reading recommendations at curbside, and we would, of course, provide them as people come in to browse, um, returns, kind of using the same practice that we're using right now. Public computer use, um, this was a very popular thing, and, and a lot of the people who use our computers don't have other ways of accessing the internet, which is so vital now. So, um, I think that's gonna be a big one. Mobile printing, um, we're actually doing that, um, now as well, but, um, and Wi-Fi, of course. Our Wi-Fi does, um, bleed a little bit outside the building, but not that much. So I think, um, we're gonna get a lot of people bringing in their own laptops to use the Wi-Fi. Um, things that we'll be continuing to do remotely, the storytimes, um, class visits, um, internet and computer assistance, um, programs like, um, the game nights and the trivia. Um, we've had author visits and workshops, we'll continue to do that as a, as a Zoom or a, a Facebook Live thing. Um, reading recommendations, um, by email, uh, works very well, or phone. Um, and then reference, um, research assistance from one of the librarians. We'll continue to do mail delivery service as long as we can, and, um, we're doing three-D printing, as I mentioned, I think, last time, um, by request. So it's not, it's not as an interactive a thing as it was. And then things that will be temporarily unavailable, um, the tech tutorial. And, um, this is unfortunate, I mean, we will certainly assist anyone over the phone, but that prac, um, practice of making an appointment and sitting side by side with somebody is gonna have to be paused until this is over. Um, and then the silent study rooms, as I mentioned, and the community room, we're, um, removing any toys and manipulatives in the children's room just to, because children are not gonna necessarily be as mindful of what they've touched to make sure that it gets sanitized afterwards. Um, the book sales and the free carts will be put away. Um, that, those after-school ideal lab and zone activities that we've had in the community room and at Westlake are gonna have to be, um, brought back at the end of all of this. And then group visits, um, we routinely get, um, kind of group visits from, um, special day centers and things like that. Um, we won't be able to accommodate those in the initial stages. And then also accepting materials donations. So that is what we're expecting it to look like. Um, it's an ongoing discussion, um, with me and the staff, and, um, you know, there's lots of unknowns, we don't know, um, here, I'm gonna stop this, we do not know when we're gonna be able to move into this next phase, and we, but we do expect, just like with the curbside service, that, um, once we do, we're gonna see what works, we're gonna see what doesn't work, and, and we will make adjustments to try and, and maximize the services that we're able to provide while still remaining safe. So that's the goal. So, are there any questions?
Well, I don't have any question, but I just wanna thank you for taking the, you know, that. I was listening to one of the, it was Nancy, the superintendent for, she was on a call this week, and, um, was talking about how we live with this COVID, you know, this time. I mean, you can't find the cure yet or make it go away, but we just need to learn how to, to work around it. And so you have, you know, and having a plan, you know, there's always gonna be hiccups. But, you know, we keep going. So, so thank you for taking the time to do that and even acknowledging some of the, um, some of the, the concerns that I have, you know, with myself from my end, and you were able to target it and put it in a plan, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Sheila, that was very detailed. Um, so there really aren't any questions from me as well, but we appreciate you being very detailed. Um, actually, yeah, I do have one question. Um, so I know that, you know, upon opening, there will be, um, limited patrons that are allowed to enter once it's safe to do so. Um, have you thought of, or has, um, have they come up with, um, what percentage that might be, like, would it be like ten percent capacity, twenty-five percent? Kind of wanting to know what that looks like.
Yeah, there were guidelines regarding, um, like, the overall capacity of the facility, but we actually found that we needed to look at it, um, because people don't distribute themselves, you know, evenly. So we, we looked at the, the number of computer workstations that we could have that were physically distanced, um, which is limited by the furniture and the, and the outlets and things like that. And then also, you know, looking at, um, the layout of, of each library, and it's, it's gonna be, you know, probably about six or so people for using the computer at a time, and maybe ten to twelve for browsing. Um, and then we wanna, wanna make sure that people, um, you know, that parents can bring their kids if you have a family, that, that we have enough space, um, to incorporate, you know, small groups coming in, family groups coming, household groups.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, we have about twenty minutes left, so maybe we should.
Um, okay. So, um, was that it for our report this evening, Sheila?
Well, I had received a request at the last meeting to, to talk a little bit about the staff. Um, so I can do that very quickly. Um, I, I, I believe she was, uh, trustee, um, Santos was asking about the full-time and the hourly staff. And so, um, the full-time staff are all working full-time. Um, they are, um, working on-site to support the curbside, of course, and then some of the other back-office things, the receiving and processing of materials and that sort of thing. Um, staff are also, um, helping to support the two, um, weekly food distributions that the Recreation Division is coordinating. Um, so the, the one that's there at Westlake Park and then, um, twice a, a month there, also at the mall, at the shopping center. Um, and then staff are also doing some projects from home, um, they can do phone and email support for patrons. They're doing, you know, trainings and, um, and other projects like that, special projects. Um, also, the virtual programs that require filming, they're doing at home so that they can, um, do it without a face mask. So, um, we do have a schedule for staff that, um, that we try and be as flexible as possible, but so that we have ma, minimal, um, overlap where we can, um, you know, within reason. And then the hourly stuff, um, we have about twenty hourly staff on the books. About eleven of them are currently working regular shifts. Um, they don't have as many hours as they did previously because, um, because, you know, the, the workflow and the, the volume of work is just different. Um, they do have regular hours, though, so it's predictable, and we work around, of course, their, um, their school or job schedules. Um, we have had, um, hourly staff that have opted not to return right now, um, if they have that option, and, um, they would like to wait, and so we're supportive, of course. Um, and then, um, as we've expanded, we've, um, brought back people, and as I mentioned in the, in the reopening plan, at, as people are brought back in, they're trained on the COVID safety and all of that. Um, and so we, we schedule based on our, you know, our schedule for a curbside and, and any of our operational needs, but also around the availability of the staff. And we're looking forward to the next phase when we can hopefully bring back some more.
Thank you, Sheila. Thank you. Okay, so, um, if there are no questions for Sheila in regards to staffing or the ser, the modified service model, we're gonna go ahead and move on to the trustees' report. Um, so, um, in our, you know, at our previous meeting, um, we discussed, um, you know, having a conversation, and Stephen is helping us out with that regarding role clarity as board members and commissioners. Um, I think that role clarity is, um, you know, very important for us because, you know, as we are serving the public, it's important that we, you know, use these meetings to kind of educate ourselves and continue our education as trustees because we are deliberating on important items for the community, um, for the library staff, um, and for, you know, the city council that has appointed all of us, so. Um, Stephen?
Okay, let me just share my screen real quick. Okay. Can you see this?
Yes.
So, um, I'm going to go over some of the roles and duties that are outlined in the ordinance that created the Library Board of Trustees, okay? And I think we should start with why the, the board was created in the first place. And the city council created this board because it serves a public interest and because they want to create a greater connection to the community on all issues relating to our libraries. Um, trustees, as trustees, you serve in an advisory capacity to the city council, and you are appointed at the pleasure of the city council. And I've listed the ordinance number in case you wanna look it up on our Muni code, but there is one section that is the most interesting because it outlines your duties and powers as trustees. So I apologize that these slides are a little text-heavy, I generally don't do that, but I'm just, I, I wanted to use the exact language from the ordinance, so you see it. So I just wanted to go through the four different areas of duties and powers, and we'll start with A, and that is to act in an advisory capacity to the city council on all matters pertaining to the library, and it can be so many different things like budget or capital improvements or service levels or fundraising, or even legislation that affects the libraries. So this is something that the library division will continue to, that, bring matters before you, um, for your input and recommendations at these regular meetings, and to keep you apprised of all the latest developments. I think that one of the most interesting, uh, parts of letter A here is that last line that says, "While addressing the diverse elements of the Daly City community." And I think what that means is that trustees should evaluate the information on programs with that lens of providing top-level service to our diverse community members who may have very different needs and desires for programming, really. And then we move on to letter B, and that's to consider the annual budget for the library division prior to its submission by the city manager to the city council. Um, per our standard timeline for budget formation, the library division will continue to ensure that we bring that budget to you for feedback before it's submitted. These first two things are kind of staff-driven topics, okay? And, and we'll continue to bring these topics to you on a regular basis. Where it, let me go to the next page here. I think where it gets really interesting is here. And letter C is about providing advice and community perspectives regarding libraries. And then to promote and stimulate public interest in the libraries, and even to cooperate and collaborate with other organizations that have an interest in libraries. So I, I love letter C, I think it's really about that public-facing role as a trustee. And then it, it really aligns well with your last area of duty, and that is to gather community opinions, needs, perceptions, all of it, regarding libraries, and advise the library director about that, and then also provide that information to the community regarding available programs and services through the libraries, and to encourage their participation. So really, the, the trustee role is pretty dynamic, it's pretty public-facing, too. Um, trustees should know their community and solicit perspectives from their community. Um, trustees should be a champion for library services and promote participation. Um, trustees should help create a strong support network for our libraries, and that really might mean connecting people you know that have an interest in libraries or an organization or something you heard about to the library division, and so they can run with whatever the, the idea might be. And then finally, um, trustees really create a two-way communication with the community and city staff. You're gathering input from the community, you're relaying that to us, and then you're also promoting library programs on the flip side. Now, on that first slide, many of those things were things that city staff would bring forth at meetings. But I, beyond those more routine staff initiative topics, I, I love the role of trustees here that's really public-facing, and I'm interested in how you as a trustee will shape your role to be in touch with the community. I think it's such a fantastic opportunity to be on this board, um, but it's a big role, too, you know, and it's a lot to think through. So I, I'd like to help you think through it and, and what that means for you individually. Um, we all have different relationships in the community, we know different people, and together as a group, you know a lot of people, right? So there's a lot of power in that, and so, um, these roles really are kind of what you make of them, and you can be as involved as, as involved as you want to be, really, when it comes down to it. And I'd love to get some of your initial thoughts, but I do wanna say that there's no pressure to come up with something on the spot here. When you're really thinking about a role, that's a lot of information to digest, and sometimes it helps to sleep or think on it for a while. So that's okay, too, there's, there's no pressure, I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but this can also be a conversation we continue at the next meeting, too. And keep it going there, if, if that works better, too. But, um, I think the only outcome here is just a better understanding of roles so that you all feel empowered, really. Um, so don't feel nervous or anything to, to come up with something right now, but, um, I do have some discussion questions here, if, if maybe that could serve as a prompt, or if you have any general thoughts or feedback, or how this might apply to you, or, you know, um, would love to hear that.
Yeah, so, um, thank you so much for that, Stephen, it is a lot of information. Um, so I think, and we're kind of, we've got about like ten more minutes, um, coming up on time. So I definitely wanna put this as an agenda item for our next meeting in January. Um, a lot of things resonate with me, um, as the board president. Um, you know, um, when I think about like staff-driven topics, as you've mentioned, um, collaborating, um, being really a face in the community. Um, those are things that I'm sure resonate with all of the board members here, which is why we were selected, right? Um, and so And so, you know, for our agenda items, meeting after meeting, we talk about, you know, creating awareness, advocacy, community involvement. So, you know, taking what you've given us and really, you know, putting that play, you know, as we think about 2021. I think we'll have some really good collaborative conversation. But let me go over to Steve or is to see if they have any thoughts or questions at this time. Vice President Falcoa, do you have any thoughts or questions at this time?
I have, you know, some, oh, thank you, Stephen, for preparing that for us. It's very very clear now, you know, to see. And I'm not going to waste time on, you know, but let's table it for our next, you know, our next meeting. But let's move on so that we can finish it. I think we should all go, our assignment is to go read it, comprehend it and see what other questions that comes up or anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. And what about your trustee dogs?
Yeah, thank you, Stephen, for preparing all of this. I think this gives us a better sense of like what else we could be doing. And so I'm just reflecting on like the many collaborations that can happen in the future. And I agree with tabling this for the next meeting so that, you know, our ideas can be on the table when we meet again. So yeah, thank you, Stephen, for doing this.
No problem. And we'll send this out to you all so you can reference it. And it's something that, you know, we can revisit from time to time if you'd like as well. And just, you know, kind of have a, keep a clear idea of maybe where you want to head in the future.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, Ms. Victoria, you are up with your report for D C P L A.
Thank you so much. I always appreciate being here. I'll try to keep it really short. The main things we're focused on right now, of course, is promoting the Daly City Youth Poet Laureate Program. We've had a few applicants, but we would really love more help getting the word out about that. We want to make sure that every eligible student is aware of it because we think it's something really beneficial for, for our families. And on, at the next city council meeting on November 23rd, we plan to present a grant of 10,220 to go towards our circulating technology grant that we have provided some, you know, wifi hotspots and computers, laptops in the past, but that, that is passing along 5,220 directly from the town of Colma. That's to purchase Chromebooks and additional Chromebooks and wifi hotspots. And also 5,000 that will come from D C P L A members, donors and sponsors from some of our previous events that we've had. And that will go to purchase Playway Launchpads. Those are early literacy and kindergarten readiness tablets that come preloaded with between 10 and 20 subjects or theme B-based apps. And they're educational and fun and they don't require wifi. So they're geared more for younger, younger students. And we felt that this was a good, good time for that sort of thing. So thank you to the library for, for letting us know about that need. And we are very happy to be able to fund that. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victoria.
That's a huge amount. Thank you.
Okay, so are there any announcements and communications at this time?
I have, I just forwarded Ms. Anderson some flyers and she can share it. One is that we're having this Friday. Bay Shore, we're hosting a COVID testing on our Bay Shore. The Bay Shore parking lot, I think. And it's right there. Both in Spanish and in English. So we can post it on our website to push it for more. And then also Pitt is hosting a, even though it's not December yet, we're hosting a drive-by giveaway toys. And it's going to be at Bay Shore as well.
Let me show that one. Sorry, I got behind. Can everyone see that?
And where are you collecting? Where are you collecting toys for this giveaway?
So we have sponsors that we're constantly receiving and storing at the school. On, if you would like to donate, just let me know. Where to pick up from.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Okay, I have just a couple of things.
Okay.
If that's okay. We will be actually next Monday, starting slightly expanding the curbside hours to include Monday, two to five at the Cervani Library. So we'll be updating the website and, and all that. And we also have a, Catherine has, is going to be doing a Bay Area local sports trivia night via Zoom this coming Thursday at 7:00 PM if anyone is interested. For people who are into sports. You can take a look at our Facebook or go to the website for more information.
Thank you. So that's all posted on Facebook, right?
And, yeah, and then, and the new hours for curbside as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much. So on to our agenda building for next meeting. So for December, our meeting, we typically do not have a holiday, a meeting in December to observe the holidays. And so we will meet, you know, in January, right? But so we can already, you know, start agenda building for January, which will be our next meeting. So we'll definitely keep COVID-19 updates on that agenda, right? And now that we have our information on role clarity as trustee members, we'll take information and we will deliberate on, you know, what we've presented, what Stephen's presented and come with any questions, comments on how we can better utilize our role. Just, so let me go to Vice President Falcoa. Is there anything you would like to add for the agenda for the next meeting?
No, not now, since we're only down to two minutes. But I have a question, Stephen. Can we use those, what you just presented, the presentation? Can we do a study session? For that?
We could have a special meeting if you wanted.
I, I, I will, I like to, you know, I like to motion to see if we can use a special meeting for that.
It, it's totally possible.
But Angela, I don't have anything for now, since we're very, we've got one minute, but that will be.
Yeah. Yeah, we can definitely, you know, decide on when we would have our special meeting at the next me, at the next meeting, I would say.
And maybe we'll find out who's going to fill that spot. Because it will be good if we have that spot and that person to have, you know.
Yeah, good, good use, good time management. And what about you, trustee dogs?
Nope, I think what's on the agenda is pretty good.
Awesome. All right. Any public comment?
No public comment.
Comment. All right. So we are right at time. I just want to wish everybody a very happy holiday. It was wonderful, you know, working and hearing all of your views this year. You know, happy holidays to you and your families. And we will all meet again in 2021. I can't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.